The other choice is I recommend using, since I could remember buying a new one after till I want.
Yeah.
But then doing a repair on the other one and using this thing.
Yeah. It's not like they're not going to be used ever again.
No. If I had my gun, it could be used more often.
Yeah.
It's called Spraybox. It's called maintenance. All right, we got Andy Green, Crystal Becky.
All right, we call the regular school meeting to order at 6:30. Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please, in the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, adjustments to the agenda. We'll go into executive session according to MRSA 1, section 405A. We will be discussing the acceptance of the teacher contract. And it also will be a personnel issue discussion. And we'll move that down to eight and a half. Oh, is everyone okay with that? You want to move it up further up on the agenda where there's no public here? Is that good, everyone? Okay. Does anyone else have anything they want to add to the agenda, adjustments or anything? Okay. Approval of the minutes from February 2nd, 2016. Anyone approve of those? Fire out a motion.
I'd make a motion, we accept the minutes, that last meeting as written. I'll second it.
He's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes from Tuesday, February 2nd, as written. Any discussions? Own favor?
I wasn't here.
You got an extension?
All right. Public participation? Does Mr. or Mrs. McHugh have anything to say at this time?
All right, in your packet. Got a chance to read. Passed annually by the Bay Harbor's Old Town Office to do a school department town report. I want to make sure that I haven't missed anything that you would desire to have reported out. Administration has had a chance to look at it and give you some comments back. And I had a chance to, and this is my fourth draft. Hopefully, my spelling is right and my language is correct. I haven't sent it on to an English teacher yet.
Align. I got it, and I'm not an English teacher.
Which one?
Just says align.
The word that I circled there when you handed it to me.
Alien.
Do I have aliens still?
It's a second.
Second paragraph.
Second full paragraph, last sentence.
I'd be named to that one.
Oh, I saw it when I did it.
Right there it is. See that? I circled it. Yeah, yeah. Captured it in there. I'll change that to an L-I-N-E. My fingers move fast.
I thought it was.
It's still looking wrong.
I thought it was covered just about everything.
Good.
And he handed it to me a week or so ago.
All right, small change.
Just a general consensus, though, I don't need to vote on it.
No, no.
This is what's going to go in the town report?
Town report.
All right, and the 2016-17 budget?
Okay, we discussed it for quite a while, an hour and a half. We made a few changes and we have some questions that we'll be bringing back on next week Tuesday to discuss concerning staffing, specifically at the elementary building. We made a number of changes. It looks to me like we probably have reduced it 25,000 or 30,000 tonight. In reality, I've been calculating to do the act. And I'm waiting for some small additions. I've got a pretty good idea of what they're going to look like, but I want to have some actual quotes. If you're aware, Andy, I had some contact. I just didn't give us enough. I'm waiting for their estimates, and I should have a quote on me from mechanical services on the control system. I was hoping I'd have it today, but I should have it tomorrow after I talk to them later.
Very well. Okay, the second reading.
And those policies are all in your packet. And I have for you the packet of those that we adopted last time, too. So you can add them to your, I'll punch, beautiful. So you can add them to your books if you're keeping a book. Keep one for Jane. Those are the last ones. And these have been redone and adjusted appropriately. And I have all the adjustments somewhere. Is that mine?
That's mine. Take one and pass it on.
And the one that we also need to add is the JICC, which is the Fairness of Academic Eligibility for Extracurricular. And I had a short discussion last week with Mrs. Neta. I think she sent out an amended version to you.
I have, I have a copy of, with the red.
Yeah, with the red?
With the red.
Yeah, I didn't print mine off.
I mean, I have this copy if you want it, because I got mine on the computer at home, but. I do, I have to say, I do like the adjustments to that. My major concern is with, like, the year-long activities. Having them running around, they're academics surrounding the sports season.
They are, the year-long aren't around the sports seasons.
Okay, so they're, are they set, how are they set up?
They're set up so that at the beginning of the year, when the program starts, they are eligible or ineligible. And then they go under the same rule of every four weeks. Four weeks on, if they don't improve, four weeks they're off. Or they're on probation. I guess is the way we left it.
When I looked at that, the second part, with the red section under the, near the end. It doesn't make any sense, because it still says about practices and games and suiting up, and it doesn't apply to those other activities. So it really couldn't go as written.
You're talking about, like, National Law Society and Chess Club and?
Right. I mean, you use the same words, you use the same words under the.
Economic.
Economic.
Right.
Yeah, you use the same words for the sport one as under the other.
So it should say, if at the next progress report, the student is still not meeting the standard, they will be unable to continue in the activity.
Right.
Correct.
Student will still be able to, the student will be on probation and not able to attend formal competitions.
Okay, my, my feeling on this whole policy is that if a student isn't academically where they should be and you're still expecting them to continue to participate in this activity, it's taken time away from academic efforts. Obviously, they need to spend more time on the academic. But by requiring them still to continue to go to practices and attend games, that is a lot of dedication and time that could be spent in the academic arena. Instead of, you know, once they, once they don't attend practices and don't attend the games, if they were part of the team, they'd be off the team anyway.
It still doesn't take.
To me, from my viewpoint, if I was a parent, I'm thinking, okay, obviously, if my kid isn't where they should be, they need to be spending more time on their schoolwork. But you're taking time away from them and requiring them to still go to all the practices, to still go all the games in order to stay on the team. And I just, I think that that gives leeway for the parent to come back later on at the end of the year and say, well, they didn't grow academically as they should. They, they aren't meeting requirements still, but yet you require them to stay on that team. You should have, you know, some parents are going to say, come back at us and say, well, you, if they weren't there, you should have put them off the team. They could have spent more time working on their schoolwork, but you kept them on the team, made them go to all these practices, made them go to all these games.
I don't see anywhere in there where it says it's mandatory, they have to do that. The parents can pull them off that team anytime they want them.
And that's what I'm saying. We should support the parent in that.
But.
We do.
But I don't think they will.
But to give them the opportunity, Elaine, to, they're still going to have to meet the, the, a certain level, whether they continue to go to the practices and the games or not, they still get to meet that level. And if they find out that it's too much, that they can't do both, then he or the child's parents has to make that decision to, all right, listen, you can't do both. You gotta, you gotta spend time on your study. I think it just.
I, I do understand that.
Okay.
I, I do.
I know you do. I know you do, and I'm not talking down to you either, but.
No, I know, you know, and I don't feel that you are. But I, I work with parents for a long time, and I understand that some of them are contrary. They're going to see it another way once the time has passed and it comes to the end of the year and the child is not where they should be academically. They're going to grasp the straws.
Are you thinking we're going to get the blame for?
I think we could.
I think if, if we have meetings.
We're going to get a lot of blame for everything.
You stress to them, this is the new grading system, this is what's going to happen.
Yeah.
Almost, I almost have to make it mandatory with this, I think, in order for it to work.
Well, and I'll tell you honestly.
As a parent of an athlete, if for some reason she was failing and had to go on academic probation and she had to sit on the bench, to me, it would make her work harder, because she is sitting on the bench, watching her teammates play. She can't play because her grades are not far enough.
And not able to support her team.
And if she really, really likes the sport, she is going to work harder to bring herself up so she can get back on that court.
And that will work that way for some students, but I can see it not working that way for others, you know? I mean, we're not going to be able to come up with anything.
The thing is, you kick them off the team, they're not going to do anything.
Right.
They're done.
Yeah, because they don't have anything to.
Right.
It's kind of a motivation thing.
Yeah.
It is.
I can see Crystal's point in that. I mean, and again, it comes back to the student needs to be responsible as well. I mean, they want to play basketball, or they want to play tennis or baseball, then they know what the rules and the consequences are. It's written out for them.
And it's not just the sports, it's any.
It's any.
Any extracurricular. I mean, if they still have to go to a math, whatever it is they go to, and have to sit and watch, if it's something they really, really want to do or like to do.
They'll either remove themselves or.
Work harder.
Work harder.
And the parents still have the option of pulling.
Oh, yes.
Their child as well, if they feel the need.
And you know, this policy is no different than the 300,000 other policies we've already decided on. If we pay close enough attention to them, we can always be making adjustments to them. What, you know, I mean, I can't sit here and say that this is the best policy ever. And it's going to, it's.
Guaranteed to work on every day.
Guaranteed to work, I can't say it, and I don't think anybody here can. But it's something. I think it's a good start. We may have to get.
Tweak it a little.
Tweak a little, you know? I, it's, I just think we're, I think we've done, I think Patty and everyone here has done a good job on putting their ideas together on a lot of these policies. Public input, staff input, everything. We've all done a really good job. I think it gets to a point where we're overthinking it and trying to accommodate every single student or every single situation that might arise in this school. And I don't, I don't think that's going to happen. I think we've got a good basis here, like with the other policies, and we can review them from time to time and make adjustments as necessary. So, that's my feeling on this. And I've. There is one thing, there is one other thing I'd like to say about this policy, though, after the fact. But, um, under, let's see, under section seven, paragraph B, the last sentence, uh, about the students going to an authorized summer school course. Does anyone else think that it should be clarified that the student pays for that and not the school? Because I clearly think that the, the student and the parents should be responsible for that summer school.
We've kind of talked about that, too, didn't we? We asked Bill to find out what it would cost.
It's going to be $5,000 to offer two courses and have two staff people. For five weeks, it will be $2,000, it will be $5,000. But if you've only got five students, you can't charge them each. I mean, you, what you probably have to do is just set a limit to, if you're going to school, summer school, you got to pay 50 bucks or something like that. That's what you'd have to do, is set a limit to, this is what summer school costs.
A lot of parents would make their kids work to earn it.
We used to charge, years and years and years ago, we used to charge $50 or $75, something like that, for kids to go to summer school. And then we never charged because they never came.
I think it was only three years ago that Hunter went, and it was 300 and something.
Not here.
Yeah.
Pay 300 a year.
He probably told you that, he kept the rest.
We haven't charged, as long as I've been principal, we've never charged for summer school.
Yeah, I was going to say, because I know.
He took an online retrieval class.
It was online, yeah.
Right, that's something completely different.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, those are online retrieval classes.
Colin, did you have something to say?
Are there other places where you can go for summer school?
Not, not in the past few years there hasn't been. We offered it for years, and then one year Callis offered it. One year, the kids could go over to Machias if they wanted to. But the last couple of years, nobody's offered it. But now with the new proficiency-based stuff, everybody's going to be offering it.
That sort of answers my second question, which is, do you have an obligation to offer summer school?
No.
No.
But if you're going to, if you're going to the proficiency-based graduation and kids have got to get these grades, don't you think there's going to be an awful lot of pressure to put on us about the summer school curriculum?
I, I do. I do believe that. We're not obligated, but at the same time, you've got all these standards that kids need to meet. You've got to find a way to help them meet them in order to graduate. So you're going to offer summer school, you're going to offer vacation school. During February vacation, you're going to have somebody come in and work on research papers. You know, you're, you're going to be offering after-school programs in order for these kids to meet standards. You're going to have to.
I think.
How are we going to work that number?
I don't have it in now.
They're going to have to pay.
Well. If they pay, if there's five of them paying $100, I'd say. You're still going to be on the hook for 4,500.
Well, we could set a minimum number of students we have to have in order to offer it.
You can't be doing it and losing money.
No.
And it could be open to other schools that weren't having summer school, but maybe.
Well, we always can do that. We got the kids from Chaius, we got the Eastport kids, we have Callis' kids.
To say the students, we can help you arrange tutorial. It's our teachers who'll still be around, but you're going to have to pay for it.
I'm just, I, I am worried that if we say, well, we won't offer it unless we have a certain amount of kids, I'm worried that we're going to have a number of kids who aren't going to be prepared for graduation.
But that's, that's been set in the past as well, because I can remember when Emily was a freshman. She didn't pass Mrs. Foley's English class, and summer school wasn't offered.
Right, but see.
Because there wasn't enough kids, so.
See, we don't do, though, when, when we move to proficiency-based, we won't do the, you take ninth grade English, you don't pass it, you take the whole ninth grade English over again.
Right.
It's not done that way. So we don't have that opportunity of kids retaking classes anymore. Whereas we have in the past. So we're going to have a lot of kids who can't retain their credits or can't re, can't be proficient in the standards because they're not allowed to retake the class.
Well, this is, raises another question. The whole premise behind offering summer school is not the same. So are we also going to require the amount of time? If they meet their requirements, are they going to have to stay the whole five weeks? Are they going to have to do the whole 89 hours?
No, they're not. No, they only have to redo the sections or meet the standards.
As soon as they meet the standards, they're done. So we're, we're just saying your typical summer school time is five weeks, four hours a day.
Yeah.
We're saying math and a, and an ELA, a science math and an ELA history. If we only need math, we're not going to offer ELA history. You know, so it, you can't really give a price and say, this is what it's going to cost.
So we don't know if it's going to cost us $5,000 either, because the teacher might not have to be there five weeks.
That's right.
So what are they going to do, like an independent study with the teacher there?
Pretty much.
Is that pretty much?
Every single.
Because I couldn't understand how it would be any other way if we're going to.
Every student would be on an independent study.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense.
But I think.
So do we leave this alone until we know more about it?
I think you do a summer school policy. I don't think you do anything to this.
I don't think you need to do it to this.
I think that you establish a summer school.
I wasn't thinking about changing anything part of the policy, Patty. I was just trying to ascertain whether or not, who was going to pay.
No, I think you, I think when you, when you set up your summer school, you put it in there. Yes, we're going to have summer school, and this is how it's going to be run.
So how is it written into the policy?
And then they know when they get this policy. Well, we already know the summer school policy, we know we got to pay.
I mean, because that's going to be pretty hard to budget for, isn't it?
It is.
So if they all go to summer.
You'll have to go a couple of years and say, okay, this is what we're typically finding.
At the beginning of the year, which impacts that whole process.
That's why the only way you can start is by doing your five weeks, four hours a day.
Yeah.
And then go from there.
Okay.
So I just have to say, I think, you know, if this is the trend of things coming from Augusta, I, I, I don't feel that it's right. I don't feel that they can tell us to spend tens of thousands of dollars on sports and activities for kids who are not meeting requirements. And so, just so you know where I'm coming from, so.
They're not telling us that.
What do you mean?
Well, you told us we had to pass the policy, and I think you meant we had to pass a JICC.
No, I have to have an eligibility policy.
Yes.
And I have to have an eligibility policy that is in line with proficiency-based education. The only reason that it's at a 2.0 is because we have to phase out that 70 average that we currently have with, with our current kids. When, as soon as those kids are phased out, if you guys want to put this at a 2.5, a 3.0, a whatever, you can change it. But in order to be equitable to those students who are allowed to pass, play with a 70, you've got to have the 2.0. It's the only way to be equitable.
And that will be graduating with the 2018 class.
Right, that's when that 70 will be gone, and then you can switch it to whatever you want.
Correct. Yeah, this is an interim move. And as Jer said, it's probably not perfect, but it's as good as the minds that were together can make it, and it fills most of the gaps. Will we find a hole? Let me tell you, knowing kids and parents, if there's one there, we'll hear about it in the next year, because somebody will try to use it.
And that'll happen in any policy.
Yeah, it doesn't matter which policy.
Tom, do you have something?
That's why they have lawyers.
All this discussion on proficiency and graduation brings me to suggesting to you that the superintendent's report that's going into the town report ought to address that subject. Essentially, put you on warning, parents and, and others, that we have this new requirement. There's no way we can step around it. We're working on it.
It's there, but it's not laid out quite that way.
It just touches on it.
It only touches on it.
Yeah, but I think they should be made aware of what they're getting themselves into, because otherwise, it's going to be a storm we don't want to face come.
Oh, it's going to be a storm anyway.
Because we really do have to educate our parents as to how this is going to work. It's not.
I don't know a community yet that the parents haven't gone up in arms.
They just need to be a little more organized.
I will.
The advantage that we have is that we've created some behaviors already that are leading us in that direction. So we have an advantage that the parents are already used to the grading system and those types of things. So that's going to help us. And the other thing is, is it's not in the budget, and we need to really think about it. We have to have a grading program for next year for proficiency-based, and we do not have one. And it's going to cost money.
Did you already have your meeting?
We did. We did the master connect meeting, and it, it follows kids and it shows you their trends, but it doesn't actually do any grading. It doesn't, it doesn't connect with your grade book or anything, so it's, it's useless to us. It's a great, it's a great piece of technology. It's doing some really great work, but it's not going to help us. We really, you know, the only thing that we have left to look at is Power School.
Did they ask you for any feedback?
Yeah, they did. And it's a wonderful program, it really, really is, but it just doesn't go with what we're doing. So, Power School is used up in Lee, Mr. Braun was telling me, and, you know, we'll look at that and look at how theirs is working. They're doing it with Power School. They're doing it with Power School, but Power School's expensive.
That is.
But if we replace MMS, I don't know what we pay for MMS, if the cost would be comparable or no.
Startup cost is a little bit more, but comparability after that's pretty much the same and as far as cost. We had MMS and we found, although they promised us, you know, past situation that they would be able to come up with a standard based reporting system and would help us create it. So our computer folks sat down with MMS. And they were gonna put together patches. The patches never happened. After two years of trying to do that, we simply bought Power School. And Power School was able to put that together. And what we've done in, in Lee right now, there's some costs, like I said, getting into Power School and you really need to send a person to Power School, you, which is expensive. Um, so they can manipulate the, the programming in it. We've been able to actually lay out both Common Core standards and learning standards and have, be able to, to actually calculate from grade points back to a one, two, three or four. We've, you know, designed it so that teachers could stick with the grades and we would come out with a one, two, three or four.
It's gonna pay for that original training. You gotta pay for that one year training.
Yeah.
But you're using that for K through eight?
K through eight, um, yeah, in the commons we use a K through twelve.
Yeah, a lot of schools use Power School.
And what we found too was MMS was fairly good at sending our data onto the state system, but Power School works a lot smoother for sending our student data into the state system. It's more acceptable of it.
When are you gonna look at that?
That's next. I've already sent in a request for a demo. That's usually the way I do it is I'll do a demo and then I'll have them do a demo for the staff members. And then we'll decide whether it's even useful for us and if it is, then we'll have them come here. But the training, the training will cost you five thousand dollars.
One other thing that we're gonna have to pay real close attention to and give a lot of thought to is how we're gonna transition the elementary students up to proficiency based.
I, I, I'm not worried about that.
You're not?
Nope.
Well, I hope it's, I hope it's not a problem, but I.
You get a good leader in there and, I mean, Jane and I haven't worked on it this year because she's going out, so somebody else is gonna come in with new ideas and whatnot, so it, it really hasn't been, you know, worth the while for Jane and I to work on it, but you get a good leader in there. Your leaders, you know, people now, they know this is what's coming. You gotta do it. You don't have a choice. So, um, we'd like to see them work really closely with Princeton too and be on the same page.
Yeah. That's gonna be the important thing that, specifically Princeton and Woodland Elementary are on the same page. That way students coming into Woodland High School will be similar rather than, although strengths and weaknesses may be a little bit different, but at least the scoring coming in with depicting them, how they're doing will be the same, so we'll know where they are for placement. And that's gonna be important, especially coming out of Princeton for an eighth grader coming to high school. What's that placement look like? What's their real ability?
And elementary schools have done the one, two, three, four for years, so that won't be anything new to parents. They won't have to get used to that. It'll be some of the behave, some of the taking the behavior out of the grading and, you know, grading on assessments as opposed to just homework. And that'll be some of the new stuff that parents will have to get used to there. But the grade, the way the report card works won't be a problem for parents of the elementary.
Actually, they transitioned pretty well.
It's really when you think about it, they already do. My first graders, they only get graded on their assessments seriously right now.
And your grades are, are based upon specific outcomes for that subject area.
Right.
When you get to the elementary level of kindergarten, I can count to ten, I can count to twenty, I can divide by, um, fives, I can count by tens. Those objectives are laid out and that's what's checked off, showing the standard that they've reached. So it's just carrying that from about second or third grade on up through sixth into seventh and eighth grade for Princeton.
Cause that's how mine now curriculum is.
Yep. And they're all standards laid out and each standard is scored. And then there's a score for the mathematics or the game plan results.
It's strange though that we've been doing it in elementary for quite a while.
You really.
You really, you didn't even realize, really.
Yep. The big part for the parents is the homework. You know, cause kids for so many years have been, had elevated grades if they do well on homework. And, um, that's not there for them anymore.
That's what they can show.
Alrighty, well, uh, we're back to number eight. To, uh, for a second reading. And the following policies are J I C, J J I F, J K, J K double A, J K double A dash R, J L C B, J L C C, J L C D, J L C D dash E, E V C F, J L D B G, J L. And I'm gonna throw J I C C in there with it.
You do it all together?
Do it all together.
They had a motion in the second and the first reading, all they need is a vote.
Okay, all those in favor of the previous mentioned policies, adoption. Well, actually, let's do that. I make a motion that we accept or adopt the previously read policies.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to accept the previously read policies as written. Any discussions?
I will, I, I have, I have something to add.
What's that?
I wanna make sure that these kids know that these are rights, are not rights, they're privileges. While they're sitting on the bench in uniform and not.
Oh, yeah.
It's written right in the athletic handbook.
But that doesn't mean that they read it, so. I want, really want that stressed, that there are no exceptions, just because they get behind in a game, you don't throw them out there on the floor.
Oh, no, 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 not about that. Acceptable.
Any other comments? Hey, all those in favor? Okay, we have four, all those disfavor, four to one. Now, let's, uh, set the date for the next me, we're gonna jump down to nine. Set the date for the next meeting.
That would be, uh, March first.
Probably have that written in, don't we?
Yeah, I think so.
Should be March one.
Is that five?
Five.
Budget workshop.
Five. Yep, five o'clock. Copy that. Okay, that's good. Um.
Is that a budget or?
Budget and, budget and a meeting.
Okay. Start at five.
Five.
Uh, Ann and Tom, we're gonna go into executive session now. Is there anything you'd like to, any parting words?
I've asked Tom to stay with me, cause Jane was going to, but he's just not here, so. I'm just gonna have Tom sit in here with me. I'd just like to have somebody with me.
Cool. Yeah, I'm gonna take a couple minute break here.
So I've got a motion to go into executive session and we're not yet.
Yeah, uh, let's see.
Just need a first and a second and a.
Yep, I'm gonna try to. I move that we go into executive session under M R S A Title One, Section four oh five A. Um, to accept or, or discuss the acceptance of the teacher contract and.
Except for you don't have to do the teacher contract.
We don't have to.
We can do that in public.
Oh, okay, cause you got it written down here.
I, I.
Okay, permanent for, uh, personnel issue.
Yep.
Get a second?
I have a second, a second.
Yep.
Oh, we got three or four.
I got Crystal. She went up there first. Okay, wanna take a short break?
Yeah, we're gonna take a short break first.
Uh, just gonna get a time.
Give four or less.
Nope. Fifteen, twenty minutes.
So this is to accept this?
No.
No, no can do it.
We're ready for that next, just before we leave.
Yep.
You don't need executive session for that.
It's just some.
Teachers have voted it through. We're ready to go.
See, so we're supposed to vote on something we've never read before.
Yeah, we've read it.
Well, you should've.
Some of us, I've never gotten, I'll be able to.
Well, you can abstain, cause Elaine and Gwen and I.
We're on the negotiation.
We're on the negotiation team and, have you read it?
I've never seen it before.
Oh, you haven't?
No.
Okay, well, that's probably my fault. Uh, yeah, I should've had that in the meeting, I suppose.
I mean, I know what one looks like. I got one.
It's, um, there's no tricks in it.
They're pretty.
I need a drink of water. Was it supposed to come right up here?
What about the one they were taught, the thing they were talking about, he wanted, it was that one of those last budget things that he wanted added in? What the hell was it? You weren't there. You flew out of the meeting.
I haven't heard. I know, uh, we had a flood over the last week. I had to go back home and drive back and forth to the days, but, uh, and they take me back to the hospitals, the last I learned.
They wanted something.
And I just got back up Monday. I don't know what's going on now.
I don't know. They must've figured it out.
Yeah, she was, yeah, she was there. No, I don't believe she is. I know when the cars are gone, that means that they're probably down visiting her at Easter night.
Yeah, that's what it's like.
Yeah, yeah. And they were all gone last week when we had flood. Came home to the apartment, there was serenities of water as well. Good thing I had river boots. Good evening. It's another fine day in the neighborhood.
Sure. I expect a day in Lubbock.
Lubbock?
Did you finally figure out what he was talking about?
No. I'll, I'll explain it to you, but not really. He believes that for some reason, we put a sentence in.
Yeah, let me show you how to do that.
Yeah, I can't help it exactly how to do it.
See, you like it?
Yeah.
It hurts.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, push it.
The V T R button.
Like your feet when you walk.
Got it. It's on.
It wouldn't matter if you touch a chair or anything in here. It's all.
Okay, you have in front of you, um, the contract that was negotiated between teachers negotiations and school board. Two issues came up after we finished it, which is what has taken the time. And I wanna point those two issues out to you on page seventeen. We had a long discussion about extracurricular activities and who and what and where. And during that discussion, we had a discussion about internal candidates versus external candidates. And I wanted to make sure during that discussion and negotiation, that that was somehow defined. Which we agreed at negotiations that we would define it and I wrote that in. It went along and nobody said anything, but right now the association really doesn't think it should be there, but I'd like to accept it with it there. And then go back and yell at me.
I thought that's what they wanted.
Well, I did too, but. The other, the other one is on page thirteen. Under the beginning of the contract, as I indicated to you back a little while ago, under, I gotta find it now. It basically says, I can describe that any positions added, uh, by the board would be added to the contract. The board went, it's at the last, last paragraph of, uh, that section on page fourteen. The board, when creating new positions, will determine which stipend class that activity falls under and the activity be listed on the W E A activity page. Well. Everything that we have, activity that we have created is listed there. And we did, or the board has in the past, had an assistant to the principal, W H S, added as a stipend position. It's not an activity, number one. Number two, contract says if we had a stipend, we're supposed to add it to the contract and determine its class. That particular position does not fit under a class listed above. So in next to it, I put amount to be determined by the school board. The teachers' union feels strongly that.
Was it say that?
The amount, uh, right under that, uh, just above class A on page thirteen, under stipends. You got class A right above it says assistant to principal, W H S. And rather than an amount, I put amount to be determined by school board. I can't say that, it, it doesn't fit any of the classes above. Therefore, I felt it more appropriate to write it that way. They're not totally in agreement. But again, I'd just as soon have you accept this, um, as it is. My understanding is that this was accepted by the teachers. I haven't, this is the contract they had when they accepted it as well. So if an issue comes up, um, when people like to fight and say, you ratified it by vote, this contract. Board has ratified.
Do you have that copy that they ratified?
Same copy. This is the only one that's on.
Don't they have to sign it?
Uh, they don't have to sign it, yeah.
No, but the, the one that they ratified.
They haven't signed, they haven't signed yet. They're waiting for us to ratify. And you and I will sign tonight and they will sign tomorrow. I'm okay with it.
Why would the assistant to the principal of the high school be different than the elementary school?
It was like six thousand dollars. It's over the class A.
And see, so why wouldn't, why wouldn't we have listed it the same as the elementary school?
Uh, because the responsibilities and duties are completely different.
Oh, okay. That would be when I was in the class.
No problem.
See, two years ago, it wasn't at all the contract. They didn't plan ahead for it and then they put it together the next year. So now they want it. This is the first new contract they want it in there.
Because it was created by the board and it says stipend positions for activities now. Define that. I, I don't wanna argue whether it's an activity or not. Would be put in the contract. Okay, I can buy that. Now we've created it, ask them in the contract. But it does not fit class A, class B, class C, class D, class E, or class F stipend positions. And I can't say.
Just because of the amount of money?
Correct.
Yeah.
And I can't say they're gonna create another class either, cause I'm not gonna do that. Because if I created another class, I can guarantee you what would happen if the next class.
Everything would move up.
Everything would wanna move up. And no, thank you. So, and I can't say that the responsibilities or that position will always stay the same. And you have a right to appoint or not appoint to a position and, and, and you've done that for activities that just weren't kids and you've pretty much terminated the activity and we took them out of the contract as a matter of fact. So that's where we're at. And that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
So do we have a base?
Hmm?
Do we have an assistant principal name?
Yes.
Assistant to the principal because they're not certified.
Okay. They just helped provide?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So each year you'd have a choice, not even to fund it.
Yeah. Or determine an amount that's appropriate for whatever the requirements of the job are.
Okay, I getcha.
See, and that, that leaves you that opening as well for this way.
I move that we accept the, uh, teachers' contract for two thousand fifteen, sixteen, sixteen seventeen and seventeen eighteen. for 2015, 16, 16, 17, and 17, 18 as presented.
Second?
Yes, session.
Okay, Elaine, I gotcha. Vote!
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Gotcha.
One abstention, I believe, right? Did you vote?
Yes, she voted.
Oh, you did, I didn't see your hand, I'm sorry.
I, I went, I...
Meeting adjourned, Dad.
Blends in with the ball, but I saw...
Williams will fall to three and five. Johnson, and score away by Gibson. Gibson, way down, tries to get himself out of bounds. Trying to go as fast as he could to get the shot off. Eighty-sixty still, twenty-point lead for the Bulldogs. More court, it's Moore. Moore, stops. Gets it to... Morata, back to Moore. Inside to Smith, and out of bounds, off of Smith. To Devonte Stevens. To Gibson. Forty-five seconds to play in the game. Twenty-point lead for the Dragons, not for the Bulldogs, excuse me. Gibson, it's a three-hamming. Inside to Spur, and through his hands, out of bounds. Now thirty-five seconds to play. Morata, to Johnson. Oh. Down to Hall. Smith, turn, shot up, and no good, rebound control by Smith. He was in there with Eaton. And... Off of Devonte Stevens. To the Smith, with twenty seconds to play. So it's Morata. And... To Eaton. Back off front. Just Morata will hold the ball, we're down to five seconds, just hold it. And that's the ballgame. The Giants victorious, all the Lions eighty to sixty. The Giants' upset record to six and one. Williams falls to three and five, we'll be back with the final stats after this.